Is that the court's pleasure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, well, we'll go ahead. Each person wants to speak, got five minutes to speak on this. Well, actually, yeah, you do, but we'll start with Mr. Warren, since you were the one that wanted this on the agenda, we'll start with you.
Our purpose here today is to inform you guys about some of the problems of solar farms. I have in my hand 152 signatures that are against giving them abatements. These are...
I've got the molar here.
Yeah, maybe 155, all taken sure signs that are against it. There are several of the landowners here today that are against it, and, I mean, their properties are aligned to the problems that might happen whenever they come in. We understand that you guys don't have the authority to keep them from coming in, but you do have the authority to not give them abatements.
Mr. Warren, they're not even asking us because we're not giving it to them. We've got to...
If they ask, that's what we're here today, to inform you guys of some of the problems, and hopefully you wouldn't give them abatements if they asked for them, anytime. And we do appreciate, or I do appreciate, all the help we've had. These 155 signatures were gathered in a short time, and we know there's a lot more that would if we just went out and searched. Because living next to them is not a good thing, we think. So, that is why we're here, and that's what we're asking for, and hope you guys would consider it. And I know these people here that are in the court today would appreciate your consideration on it, too. And I do appreciate all the help that these people have given. It's been a traumatic experience if you live on a place, I live on my place for 70-plus years, been a homestead. If they put one right close to me, I don't know what happened. So, anyway, that's what we're asking for, and I appreciate your time and the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Just to address that, Mr. Warren, I don't think we're going to give an abatement to anybody.
I appreciate that.
We personally, after looking at the two that were given back in the early 2000s, I can tell you that they were not beneficial to Eastland County, ended up costing the taxpayers of Eastland County more money than the home.
I appreciate you guys.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Rain saying that, and obviously, I guess, in this situation, I don't mind sticking my neck out a little bit, speaking for the court, but, I mean, all you guys are welcome to speak or whatever, but I'm not inclined to approve this either. I don't think...
I don't think they'll even come ask, to be honest with y'all, because after the BP bunch, or whoever bought BP out down there, come in, and we had our meeting with them back a year, year and a half ago, we've never been approached for another since then, because they were pretty much told no, and so nobody else has ever asked.
And that's, hey, and that's always, I mean, that's always, we, obviously, you said that, we don't have the authority or the ordinances to keep them out, but I don't, there's absolutely no motivation for us to give them a tax abatement, at all. So, I mean, we...
And in their words, when they come to us, and they were asked from this table, "Is this going to stop you from doing what you're going to do?", and they said, "No", so, I mean, right there tells you, why even consider it if they're going to do it one way or another, why give them any more of a break than what they already get?
Some of them on here were Mr. Warren's, and say, "I figured they were around".
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that was Mr. Warren.
Yeah, that was Mr. Warren. Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I am not, and I appreciate Ronnie saying that, I'm not trying to cut anybody off, I'm just telling you, we can shortcut this deal if you guys got something else to do, because we're not doing it.
Yeah.
So, and I'm one vote, but like I said, I don't see anybody on this court doing it. So, Mr. Bussey, would you like to, who's Mr. Bussey?
Well, I will say a couple of things, short and sweet. We know that electric cars, when they go get on fire, we're having to dig holes to put them in because we can't get the batteries out. And we also know that an electric car, when the battery goes out, it costs more to replace the battery than it did to buy a car. And you can relate that over to solar, okay? There are hotspots, they create hotspots in the area that you're in, and nobody really knows what the fire issues are going to be. If one ever gets on fire, is it going to be like a solar, is it going to be like a car, you can't put the stupid thing out, you have to dig a hole and bury it? And that makes a hazardous waste fight alongside the highway, which, that's another deal that you have to deal with, so there's so many unintended consequences beyond the fact that they're getting, that they'll never pay out, and if they're all being paid for off our tax dollars, and other than that, I'll get out of your hair before I'm...
Mr. Bussey, I can assure you, the only electric car I've got is the one my little four-year-old rides around in. Ms. Hayes, would you like to address the...
Y'all already addressed it, thank you.
Okay. You bet. Ms. York?
Just briefly, I would like to say that I appreciate what you've just said, that this is not something you have an intent to do, or an interest in doing. I appreciate that y'all have shown an interest in the health of the county and protecting that, and we do see that there are issues with these electric farms, solar farms. So, I appreciate that very much, and we encourage you to continue with that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thought you were going to tell me you appreciated me getting my four-year-old granddaughter a dirt, a electric car. If I could have got her one that was gas, I would have done it. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I just got this information back in March, and it looks appealing because it's saying you're going to be a millionaire. I've got a little property out there, it used to be Wesley's, but he was telling me about all these hazardous effects of a solar farm, and I drilled a water well, got a good water well, got a big tank, and I don't want pollution coming in there, you know, and if that solar farm is close enough, you know, there's several hundred acres where that just thongs right down to my pasture, and I would either have to consider selling it and getting away from it, or if, you know, and a lot of these other guys here are landowners, and I see some of them that are in their concern because they've got a cattle operation or whatever, and if they put those solar panels out there, we're in trouble, you know, with their cattle operation or whatever, you know? And if it's showing a floop to the ground, we sure don't want it. But that's, that's kind of what, and y'all told me what kind of what I wanted to say, I wanted to hear, and I talked to Ronnie the other day, Midwest, they talked about it, there may not be nothing y'all can, or any of us can do. Those people have already leased that land to them, you know? Then they come out there tomorrow and start breaking ground, we, but we just thought it'd discourage them if y'all won't give them a tax abatement, y'all gone tell us what we want to hear.
Yes, sir. I don't think it would discourage them, because giving them a tax abatement for Eastland County don't mean nothing compared to what, as Mr. Bussey said, the other tax dollars they're going to get for putting a solar panel on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's federal, that's federal money, that's county money.
We do appreciate everybody's interest, and I don't know, Ms. York over there, she got, what, eighty-some signatures, and, you know, I don't, it's just something to tell us that they're against a solar farm in southern, I guess, anywhere in the county. I don't know. I think there's another one, Ronnie was telling me back over toward Hokey, but that's not a very complicated area over there, but if they put one out by Wesley's house, you know, those things just go, I've never seen one, I've seen pictures of them, and they just go from over, along, and you can't use that land for nothing else.
No, and I think you were here Thursday when I asked that question, because I was curious about that question on the appraisal side of it, when does it come out of agricultural exemption back to full market value, and that's, you know, he said, just, when they break ground for that solar farm, you lose your A exemption for that property. It goes back to full market value, and I don't...
Did anybody hear that?
Yeah.
You got that on us.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
But these, and they're people, they're getting this stuff here, and it's bottom value here is a million and nine-hundred, nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
You know, and people's looking at that.
After twenty-five years.
Yeah, after twenty-five years, but some people are looking at that, and this is on forty-seven acres, so you can imagine, if they got two or three hundred acres, that figure would go way up.
They've got people hired to do nothing but go around and sell you that, too.
Well, the guy that brought me this, put it in my mailbox, right there in Garmin, he got in my mailbox, didn't come to the door, he just opened the mailbox and shoved it in there. Well, that's, that's a good...
Yes, sir.
Alright, well, that's all I need to say, I appreciate y'all's time, and we know where you stand.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think time shares were a very good idea either, so, you just write me down for that, but I appreciate, I appreciate the input from the public, and obviously, we want to be, you know, we want to be responsive to y'all's concerns, but this is one of those things that we are, we are all on the same page, you know? Thank y'all for the work. I might have, could have saved you some signature time if you'd have just called and said, "Hey, where do you guys stand on that?", because we're, we're not. And, and going back, and I know most of y'all know this, but the county only has limited authority to regulate local issues, and we're a subdivision of the state, so the state tells us what we're able to do, and the state has given us absolutely no, no authority to regulate this, or do anything else, which is a little annoying, as a new judge, you would think that that would be something that we could do, so, but anyway, I'll quit talking, so...
Well, and on the side of where, for, over where we're dealing with, on this side with the wind farm, the, the state actually routed them down my county roads over there without calling or asking, because they don't want them to tear up their highway. And there's nothing I can do to recoup damage expenses, we as the county sue them. I mean, but they, they called me and they said, "We just want to let you know, the state routed us to your roads, not, we didn't pick this area, they, this is how they told us we had to go." So, and then they limit what we can do to them when they tear them up.
Yeah. The county takes the brunt of that, all of that. Well, you guys are welcome to stick around, or you guys are welcome to go get coffee, or whatever you need to do, I mean, happy, happy to see you guys here.
Appreciate everybody coming and helping us out on this.
And we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring it from the county side, as well.
Are you listening to the... Okay. We, we come out with, James and I come out there from fire, we cut a break around over Geno and stuff.
So, real short. Not to turn this thing on.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is bad luck, you understand? I can reach you now.
Yes, they both, glad to meet you.
She's like, wait, there, and then last week, you were like, okay.
I would make you...
Yeah, I'm James Crenshaw.
Yeah, I knew you were, I guess, made your granddad. Dave's a dad, you know?
No, no, no.
You're not kind to him?
No, not that, not that, Chris.
Okay, now, I got it. Had you mixed up, but anyway, they're good people, too.
Yeah, that's a good name.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Thank you for presenting.
Yeah, I'm on your own time. And y'all do a good job, I appreciate it. Got to ask a question.
What the hell?
All these signatures, make a copy, or give it to people, or someone, you know? Oh, it's...
No, no. Were you only a gin?
Six or eight sheets, yeah, because there's several signatures.
Yeah, we're not going to gank it that far today.
We'll take care of it, we appreciate it.
But I'm glad you were here, because I actually figured about half of them were for the next item down on the...
I'd love to hear what you're thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
You're almost finished.
No, we try not to.
I didn't call about the burn ban, but I would like to say that we keep that thing on, myself.
I believe so.
I don't think there'll be any action on that.
Yeah, I think we're setting fires out there.
Sorry.
Well, that's what she gets for...
Yeah. Trying to clean up the neighborhood.
My wife's coming back, she went to the, went to the four-year-old granddaughter when I was talking about, first day of school.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate you using the school.
Sheriff, do you have a 9/11 update dispatch?
Nothing this time, Judge.
Okay, why'd we have you on the dirt scheduling? C, Johnny Signs, ABP Treasury Management Specialist, to present First Financial Bank Purchase Card Program, Ms. Key.
He's not here. Okay, well, we can skip that one.
Okay.
I'll just tell you, Johnny Signs contacted me, the court gave permission a long time ago to pursue the purchasing card through the state, we started switching software about that time, and I have not done it. First Financial Bank contacted me, they have a purchasing card program, but he was going to present today, so...
They don't rebate the taxes.
They don't rebate the fuel tax? Okay.
That's all I know, is they don't rebate the fuel taxes. I know he had emailed you and, and Lisa, asking if he still wanted it to come today.
Oh, I didn't see it.
You want to table it? Have them table it?
If they don't rebate the fuel tax...
I guess you wanted to use them for everything other than fuel.
Well, we could do that, but...
But they don't rebate the fuel taxes, so it wouldn't be advantageous.
Okay, let's table it, and see if we can get him on the next meeting.
I don't think we need a motion, do we? Just to table it? We're just going to take action?
Yes.
We do need it? Okay, alright, we'll motion back. Now, two commissioners on the end. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, motion, item is tabled, and they don't, they don't rebate...
Fuel tax.
The fuel tax. Okay, I just, I just need to put something on there. Okay, D, discuss and consider allowing JP Office to purchase a new keyboard and a mouse out of the technology fund. Judge, call in.
Basically, it's, my understanding, it's one of those carpal tunnel keyboards, and she does a lot of typing, and she's also starting to get a lot of wrist and hand issues, so we're just trying to make her plug along for another four years, and I'll make the motion.
Mr. Rain, second. My Mr. Crenshaw, all those in favor, say aye. Paul Simpson, what?
Go ahead. I'll do it for the record.
Yeah, I've got it, that's, I have, I have that on D.
Okay. Just for the record, that's going to be paid from 040-455-035600, computer equipment, and there is budget.
Okay. I have no idea what that number is.
You have a copy of his budget.
I know, but I could have wrote it down up there.
Yeah, five, one.
Okay, we're ready to discuss the...
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I thought you were going to tell me you had carpal tunnel. There was a, Brad, were you here for...
He's here for budget.
Okay.
At the very last, the very last thing we need to talk to or talk about.
I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you. We may, we may hold him, we may hold him over to the lines, and...
It's going to piss your attention.
Alright, do we go ahead and, do we want to do it, go ahead and do F and G, or do we want to wait until we discuss his issue? Is, I mean, I know what he's going to talk, what he's here for, but what's the pleasure of the court?
I'd just assume that's, wait until we get to the budget to talk about the tax rate.
Well, do you want to move the budget workshop to...
We can.
Right now, and...
I mean, if he gets to talk faster, and, I mean, I don't really like him to sit out there in the white.
Okay, budget discussion is needed, we're going to go ahead and move, we'll go ahead and move to number five at this point, then.
Well, you, I can do the same thing right there. Now you got a gun, girl.
Come on, kids, don't, I've got four corners here.
Before you start talking, I imagine you're talking about the capital prosecution. Okay, if you will look at page...
You don't want to, you don't want to hear from him first?
Well...
Because this, I think he's got a short presentation, I believe.
Page 20 of your budget.
Okay.
What's on page 20?
I have added Department 4770, District Attorney Senate Bill 22 budget, and Department 4780, District Attorney Capital Prosecution.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to 20.
Okay.
That's pretty...
You need one of those rubber fingers?
If you would.
Allow me, I want to talk to Mr. Llewellyn down here, he's in District Court.
Down in the bottom rung.
He's in the bottom rung, I might call him.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's blue, a lot of this is blue on the screen, and so it prints light.
Yeah. L-E. He's in District Court, he is not going to answer his cell phone.
That judge would be even more narrow-minded than I am about that.
She has this book, and this, the next one.
Hey, from the Sergeant Bobby, but I'm the Commissioner's Court, and you're going to have to see if Paul can get down here, I'm already at the table a little quicker than I thought it'd be. Thank you, thank you. He's a good real on this, but, gentlemen...
No, that was just, yeah, we have both the budgets.
Aside from the budgetary issues that arise from the subject matter, I'm here to somewhat brief the court on our pending potential capital murder case. And I believe that it would be appropriate and advisable for the court to go into executive session for that briefing portion, under the discussion with the attorney regarding legal matters that will affect the court and its budgetary impact. Then certainly, the discussion about our budget proposals will be open to the public.
Do you want me to stand, or go?
I want you to start.
Okay. Is there, are we good with doing that now, then, or are we waiting on Paul?
I'll go, I'll, we'll wait on Paul.
Alright, we'll wait on Paul, so let's go ahead and have a quick discussion about Senate Bill 22.
Okay.
And how that affects, Loretta, can you give us a, just an overview of how that affects the District Attorney's office, and also how that affects the Sheriff's office?
Yes.
And then we can, but the Sheriff is here, too, so...
Senate Bill 22 was put into place by this legislature, basically, the state is going to be funding Sheriff Department, or Sheriff and Jail Departments, and the District Attorney, the prosecution. The grant is for $350,000 for Sheriff and Jail, and $175,000 for the District Attorney.
Let me just clarify, just in case one of the commissioners, when she's talking about the sheriff, he, that's his department.
Right.
So, that's him, the deputies, everybody.
As well as the District Attorney.
Yeah, and it's the same with the DA's office, but anyway...
It's their, their offices. So, what I did was, I went ahead and added Department 4770 on page 20, and then Department 5670 on page 33 for the sheriff. Bring Paul.
Hey, Paul.
For the amount of the, well, I actually need to add more to the sheriffs, because it's $350,000, I was supposed to put the difference in equipment.
Paul, are you, do you need to get back pretty quick, or?
If we could, right in the middle of docking.
I apologize, and I apologize to the court, but let's go ahead and discuss the DA's office, so we can get Mr. Llewellyn back up to the District Court. Not that he's that, this anxious to get into County Court, but we're gonna, we're gonna give him a break on that.
We appreciate it, man. Since we're already into the Senate Bill 22, I just tell, tell the court that Mr. Llewellyn and I both have been doing research on what's available, and I think the court's probably aware that the legislature allocated $175,000 grant for small District Attorney's offices with small populations. They're still establishing the rules, working on rules, those won't be final, and we won't be able to make an application until January 1st. If awarded the grants, the funds can go retroactive to our budget date, in other words, this is October 1st, or something, yeah, October, it'll go back to October 1st after the fact. So, Loretta has been working on the budget, we're, I guess, asking for permission to go ahead and pursue that grant, it will take some dollars off the, the county budget in year, this is a two-year grant, by the way.
It, I don't think we can reduce the budget to, and the sheriff's shaking his head no to, I don't think there's a way for us to do that. I think I understand what you're saying. I think, I understand what you're saying, is that you're saying we can get what we need to do without imposing on the county's portion of the deal, but we can't actually reduce the budget.
That, that is correct, I missed, I misstated that. There's some line items that, uh, Mr. Raines, Mr. Raines, uh, mentioned during previous budget, budget hearings that were concerns that we were drawing funds from, uh, other, other accounts that, that would be appropriate for the grant fund, because they're specifically for funding the DA's salaries and, and, uh, the potential for hiring additional employees. So that's my understanding here, but you, you did state that correctly, I'm sorry, I did, that's good correction.
Judge, the Senate Bill Twenty-Two is strictly to fund salaries?
No, it's by equipment.
And combined?
No, well, no, it's limited for the DA's office.
The DA's office is limited, the Sheriff's office is not.
Okay, for the DA, it is only just salaries?
It's to increase Assistant District Attorney salaries, uh, Victim Assistant Coordinator, Investigator, and to hire new staff.
Okay.
There's four, four items that can be used.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're wanting to go ahead and have the funds available, because as y'all are aware, it's hard to get an Assistant District Attorney in here, and I'd hate to put it out there and say, oh yeah, here's the job, can't start until January.
Yeah.
And it may take us that long to find them.
And, and it's, and, and theirs is, theirs is a little bit different, and I'm not, I'm not trying to get our, our apples and oranges confused here. His, the Sheriff's can do for equipment, for raises, for additional staff, for doing whatever, so he's got a little bit more latitude with his funds than they do, but October one, if we're not paying him the minimum that the state says to qualify, then we can't apply for the grant for them in January, any of it. The DA's office is a little bit different, I don't know, when, when does, is your funding mechanisms Jan, in January as well?
Yes, we, we, we can't even make app, I think, we can't make application for the grant until January.
So those two, those two are the same.
When the rules have been established, yeah.
And, and to, and correct me if I'm wrong when I say this, the Sheriff is, um, we, we have no idea when, when the funding is gonna be. Comptroller hadn't given us an idea. We think it's, it's gonna be January, but it could be February, it could be whatever, but he's gotta be on board October one. The deputies and the jailers that, that fit this criteria would be then retro, am I saying that, retropaid?
It would be a one-time stipend.
Yeah.
That would be from October first to whenever we receive the money for what they should have been paid and what the, what the judge means, the Sheriff's on board, we have to start paying him the increased salary October first.
Yes.
We don't have to pay the deputies and the jailers October first.
That's not the way I read that, but I'd have to reread it again, but that's not the way I read that.
Well, I can tell you this, I went to the, I went to the, um, the car board that I'm on and the City of County Rural Rights, but anyway, there was ten county judges there and there was three different opinions on how that was supposed to go, so we're still in the, Jason, do you have any, any more clarification on, on that part of it?
County, the county could, if they chose to start paying everyone October one, and the grant would, would...
Catch up.
Would catch up.
But you're rolling the dice that it actually, you get it, and here's my problem with this, we're fit, if we do this like this, did you budget $500,000 in income?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll, I'll show you that, I had a nice little presentation, I didn't know Brad was gonna...
Well, that would be my deal is, is I don't wanna dig any deeper than what we're already digging about things, and that's, that's substantial number if we don't budget the income for it already too.
Yes, and, and that's a good point, but what Loretta had indicated is, is that that will be, all of that'll be set up in the budget and then it'll be funded through the grant, including the stipend, but there was some discussion, uh, again, by all of those county judges, and there was a discussion about, well, we had one judge that said, no, I'm ab, he said, I'm telling you guys wrong, he said, it says that everybody's gonna go October one, and...
Well, Jim Allison and Tac and all the emails round and round and round and round, I think you can do it either way.
Right.
You can pay it, I'll start on October one, or you can catch up when the, when the grant comes through, but the elected official is the problem. Uh, that has to start October one because of, of all the note...
Note for catch up.
And that's, that's only on the Sheriff's side.
Yeah.
The elected part has nothing to do with the DA port, portion of that.
Right.
So what if y'all apply, you've already started, the county decides to start paying the sheriff his salaries, and then the application process is denied, what happens to his increase?
He gets it anyway, that's, that's, that's the whole deal.
It's kinda like the chief deputy that one time.
Yeah.
That jumped the gun thinking that bill was gonna pass and it didn't, and then he got the...
No, that, it's all passed.
Ten thousand dollar increase.
Now, that's all passed, but...
Don't know if you'll get the application.
We, we don't know, no, they're...
It's a roll of the dice where you get the grant.
Yeah.
The application process is gonna be there.
Cause I'm thinking if you go ahead and give him yet and then the grant falls through, he's still getting the money.
But I understand what they're saying is with our requirements for publications and putting salaries out there.
You've got...
You've got to go ahead and do, Jason, or he don't get it and then he doesn't qualify anyway.
Yeah, if, if we don't, if we don't award his Jan, uh, October one, we're disqualified from any of the grant.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I don't know.
It's one of those unintended, intended consequences of how they pass and date stuff.
So you can advertise for it, and then pay him or not pay him, or you have to?
You have to pay him.
No, we, he has to meet, he has to meet a minimum, October one.
And it was included in the published salaries.
Oh, okay.
But it, there's a note at the bottom that that is grant-funded.
But this year, this year was the weird year, I, I don't know why, but anyway, they, they, they said, look, the, the Comptroller's gotta do it, it's gonna be January at the earliest that you're gonna get it.
Well, that's when you do your application.
Yeah, but the way they, next year...
Yeah, the way they actually do that though, it may be April or May before you get the first dime.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. But next year for twenty-four, we'll make application in October, is that correct?
You're gonna do it thirty days in advance of your...
Yeah, yeah, so, so we'll have, after that, it should be on a regular, regular budget, regular funded cycle.
So what happens after two years?
What I was just saying, what happens after two years?
If they don't continue?
According to, according to what I've read, and, and like I said, guys, I'm just regurgitating what I, what I, I came in, this funding is backed down in the basic part of the funding mechanism for the state, so can they pull it out? Sure they can, but if they do, they're gonna have to go way down in there, it's not like it's an outlier out here that they can just cut off.
Well, and the way Loretta's done it with the two separate budgets, it'd be simple on our end, because if they just don't fund it, the next year those two budgets go to zero.
Yeah, those lot, that budget line...
Cause you're gonna be funded through that full calendar year or full budget year.
Yeah, I have to put on that.
And then, but you'll know well in advance because they'll have to, if they're going to add to it, they'll have to do it the next state budget calendar.
Or to be legislation.
It will be legislation, they'll have to go through their state budget, so we'll know that they're gonna fund it before we get into our budget stuff into September, and that way, I mean, it, it, it'll be an easy, an easy deal for us, cause we just zeroed those two budgets.
So for the people that we interviewed, we're gonna let them know a new attorney, this is where you're funding them.
When it's out, it's out.
Yeah, yeah.
So the increased salaries...
I, I was thinking you were talking about...
Get for two years up and they don't fund it.
Asking for an additional, the, the three fifty will have to maintain, is that kinda where I was at, is that...
Like the extra sheriff's money.
Well, once we get past the, the funding for the next, that year, then the next year would be easier to add an additional deputy, well, it's the same three fifty, it's the same three fifty here, same three fifty here, so that, that only stretches so far.
Well...
Yeah, no, it's gone.
The big deal is, is you're gonna be rolling the dice for the first six months of this program, that, that, I mean, the funding is gonna be there, but then you gotta jump through the bells and whistles and the application process to get the money back. So that's gonna be your deal, is you're gonna have six months invested into the program before you ever see a dime of it, conservatively six months into the program before you're gonna see a dime of it.
But after two years, and, and the, it's not reestablished, the grant fund, and the sheriff and his deputies will roll back to what they were making prior.
But they're gonna be paid out of a separate budget, so with the DA's office, that's what we're, when she added that separate budget, so...
They're, they're running, they're running, they're, they're doing the same thing, they're rolling the dice, I mean, that's, that's what they're wanting to do, is they're wanting to get, you know, some more help.
It's like a temp, it's like a temporary position.
Yeah, it's almost like a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the money's gonna be there, but I'll also, I've never been, never been, never been surprised by what the state does or doesn't do.
The government gives us and the government takes away.
The state's gotta, is notorious for doing it two years, skipping a couple of years, doing it two years, skipping a couple of years, they're notorious for stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
On, on grants.
I hear you.
We'd be crazy not to take advantage of the opportunity.
Yeah, no, the money's there and, and the Sheriff really, really needs it, uh, for his department, but again, I know some counties funded it October one, betting on the check coming from the state, and a lot of the counties, again, big country, um, most of the big country, uh, uh, judges that were there for this meeting said, we don't have the money to fund it.
Yeah.
Uh, October one, so it's, I, I like the way Ms. Key has proposed it, that we, if they fund it in January, if thing, you know, everything's going right, then we issue a stipend, one-time stipend each employee, catches, catches them up for the difference in what they would've made, and then it's all good and it's, you know, the, the budget is, is sound, because it's coming from a different line instead of the general fund. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if y'all wanna see that trail, I can take you through it, um, on page forty-eight, this is the grants fund, this is the revenue side. Are you there, Judge?
Yes.
Okay, um, you'll see I've added General Ledger Account Z-025-3330-51000, which is the Senate Bill Twenty-Two Grant for the sheriff for $350,000, and 025-3330-51010, which is Senate Bill Grant for the District Attorney of $175,000, and then if you'll turn the page to page fifty-one, you'll see the disbursement side in line 025-7000-01000, transfer to general fund, $525,000, and then in general fund, there is a revenue side on page eight, which is General Ledger Account 010-3900-02500, transfer from grants fund for $525,000, so...
What's the last four? Okay, I, I found it, I found it, thank you.
So none of that, that transfer will not begin taking place until we receive funds.
Yeah. It's a, now, I, I'm not, I don't wanna put words in y'all's mouth, but I think what Paul was saying is he's looking for some way to fund this ahead of time, before the January.
If, if at all possible, I'd like to go ahead and, not necessarily for an increase in existing staff, but I would like to be able to post for a new position, cause it may take, and it may take until after January before we get anybody suitable that applies, but if we do find a good candidate, I'd like to be able to get along more.
Technically, if we're writing into the budget, you can do that.
Right, and that's, that, that was why I was wanting to do it, now's, uh, just in case we do have a good candidate come in.
Well, and the timing, obviously, we're, we're discussing the budget, but the timing is such that if they hire somebody, this would've been easier to do a month or two ago before school started, potentially, uh, I, I don't know that, you know, I, I don't wanna give me y'all's hiring practices, but depending on the, that employee, this, they may have said, they may not be interested because of school started and, hey, whatever, but I understand what he's saying, before we get to the other issue that we're actually gonna go into executive session about, um, the, um, that's gonna impact their office as well, so, anyway. Are there any, any questions for the Commissioners about the, about the situation, any comments or anything?
No, it's, it's just strictly a roll of the dice if you're gonna get the full amount that you ask for, because, just because it's also $175,000, that don't mean that's what you're gonna get when you apply for it too, cause I think a lot of it's predetermined on who applies, how many apply, cause if they go back to the way they've done in the past, they, everything that was not applied for, they, they divvied it out also, so you just never know what you're gonna end up with.
That would be a nice bonus there.
Cause they've done that with CTIP twice, just at the end of the CTIP, they divvy up every bit of the money that wasn't, by, by the same formula that they use from the...
But they came, they did come up with a formula for a certain amount, $175,000, that was for...
Based on population.
Populations ten to fifty thousand, I think fifty to two hundred was two hundred fifty or three hundred and fifty thousand, something like that.
Well, they do that, they do ours by, uh, oil production, they'd say it's percentage on the production that you have within the county, that's the reason why we get 240,000, Stevens County gets 1.2 million.
Yeah.
And Ronnie's got the same amount of roads in his precinct that Stevens County's got in their whole county.
Whole county, yeah.
Yeah, no, and, and I, like I said, Sheriff, did you, did you have anything that you wanted to add to, to what we discussed about your portion of that deal? Okay.
I do have one on that, I need to add on page thirty-four. I need to add an equipment line. See if I can get you a budget line.
That's gonna be equipment?
Equipment, and the amount is going to be $11,852.84, so that'll bring that total to $350,000.
$11,852, I'm sorry.
Well, I know the, Commissioner Raines having been to the Sheriff's Office, he knows the, the difficulties and challenges for rural sheriffs, uh, and, and staffing rural sheriffs as well, I mean, that's the, that's the biggest thing this is supposed to address, so, but there's nothing further from the Sheriff, uh, anything, Paul, did we have anything for Mr. Llewellyn so he can go back to District Court?
I think you needed to go and do it.
No, that's right, we do, we need you two for that.
Judge, do we need a motion on to go forward with the application process and to create a line item and fund?
I think there needs to be a separate agenda item for the application process where it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And if we'll wait on the line item, I still have others to talk about, but Paul needs to get back upstairs.
Okay, all right, we, uh, um, we're gonna go ahead and move... All right, we, uh, um, we're gonna go ahead and move, uh, on the executive session under, uh, and it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be that long. We're gonna be under five five one oh seven one consultation with attorney. So, uh, this is